Connel, seven.
Z, number four.
I, Junta, number three.
Devlin, number two.
Con, number one.
All right. Want to try, want to try. I like to make all sorts of notes that I probably never look again now.
Yeah, where's your legal pad?
Good evening, before we begin tonight's deliberations, I would like to point out the passing of Richard Doyle, who for 37 years was a teacher at the Newburyport Public High School, taught social studies, drama, and was a beloved teacher, and we're going to miss him in his passing. One moment of silence, please. Thank you. Invite you to join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pass the clip to call the roll.
Roll call for the meeting of November 13th. Counselor Earles.
Present.
Counselor Agaman.
Here.
Counselor Junta.
Present.
Counselor Con.
Present.
Counselor O'Brien is absent. Counselor Shan.
Present.
Counselor Tontar.
Here.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Z.
Here.
Counselor Devlin.
Here.
Counselor President Connel.
Present.
We have 10 for quorum, Mr. President.
Well, so do we have any late file items?
There are late files the councilors will see on their desk, Transfer O-32, an emergency preamble, and Transfer itself, O-32, which respect to safe routes. And then there are two late file additional, one is an Order 76, that was not in the agenda, but it was in your packet, that was on the ballot question. And Ordinance 27 is the zoning map amendment. They are both technically late files, but let me explain, we used to sometimes, in the past, move the deadline if there was a three-day weekend, and we haven't done that for a while for the following reason, that even though it's an extra day on the weekend, it's not an extra day for us to get the packet out. The packet, as you know, can be lengthy, and we try to do it right. So we don't move it, just so you know, going forward, there was a rumor that we might move it to Wednesday, it didn't happen. So those are technically late file, although I have to confess, generally speaking, it was a cloudy area, so that's why we put them in the packet such that they are.
What is the will of the council?
Motion to waive Rule 16 to allow for the inclusion of the late file items.
Second.
And seconded by Counselor Con, discussion? All those in favor of waiving the rules and admitting these items for discussion tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There.
Motion to waive Rule 17 to bring public utilities up to directly below the mayor's comment, out of order, please.
Packet?
And seconded by Counselor Junta, discussion?
Taking this matter out of order. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out. Shall we act on it then? If you'd like, now or after? Okay. Okay. So for the benefit of everybody, we're dealing with Communication 091, which I'll make a motion to remove from public utilities.
Packet?
Moved and seconded, take this out of public utilities. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Counselor Z.
Yeah, so public utilities met on this this afternoon, it is in Counselor Shan's ward, Ward Three. The gentleman from National Grids already talked about the purposes for the poll, it is for a specific user, that is doing two things, expanding their physical layout, but that'll be served from existing service, and they're purchasing some new equipment that requires additional needs, and that's the requirement here for the new service. So these are high-octane machines, so to say. As you can tell by the address list, there's really no one there, it's a pretty sparsely populated area in the business park. I believe the counsel from Ward Three has spoken perhaps to the applicant who needs the power, and it's really not a controversial thing here, and it came out of Committee Two to nothing, so I ask you to support it.
Further discussions?
Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's done. Good night, gentlemen. Okay, let's move to our late file items are done, public comment. It's not the same without your legal paper.
No, I had to refer off a legal document.
Oh my.
Actually, I was taking basketball notes on it one day, and I left it in the gym.
Okay, there are 19 people who have signed up to speak. I'm going to call you in the order in which you've signed up, but I might ask people, in light of the fact that many of you are speaking on the same matter, if someone had said something similar to what you were going to say, we would appreciate very much if you said, "I agree with that person." We get the message. And if you need more than two minutes, my recommendation is you write us a letter, because at the end of two minutes, I'm going to have to drop the gavel on you and say, "The next person's up," okay? So the first up tonight is Juliet Walker.
Good evening, so Juliet Walker, I live at 13 Eagle Street. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the High Street Safe Roots to School project. Many of you know I live one block from where this project is proposed. My two children cross the street at least two times a day as they walk back and forth from the Knox-Mullen campus and the high school. My family and I have traveled High Street on a daily basis by car, foot, and bike since moving to Eagle Street in 2007, so I speak from personal firsthand experience that this section of High Street is unsafe, unfriendly to pedestrians and bicyclists, and in sore need of long overdue maintenance and upkeep to the road and sidewalks. I believe most, if not all, of you have stated that you support improving the safety of High Street. What's concerning to me is that at least a few of you appear to think that the important safety improvements proposed for this project are not sufficient for you to give it your 100 percent support. We need to consider the historic nature of High Street, you say. We need to remember this is in the National Register District, you say. We need to push Mass DOT to do more, who, by the way, is paying for 100 percent of the design, engineering, and construction for this nearly $2 million project. That's right. All we have to pay for is the temporary construction easements and the allocation of staff time required to secure those. And that's not a small thing, but it's certainly a fraction of the nearly $2 million project cost we are getting for free. And remember, we asked for this. We applied for these funds, and were selected from a list of other communities who would be more than happy to receive this amount of funding. This project is not being forced on us, it's not a road straightening project like the one we thought years ago. We identified a need, we said we wanted it to make our community safer for kids and people of all ages, and Mass DOT granted us these funds. That was back in 2016, and now here we are, only two years later, ready to go, and bid it out next spring for construction. That means my kids and so many of the people you have heard from already are actually going to benefit from these safety improvements. That is, if we stop delaying the process from moving forward. I wish I could say that, that for the gentleman who I met at the project meeting in June, who was a resident of High Street, had a teenager 15 years ago who got seriously injured at Johnson Street. Luckily, he is now a grown man and got married last summer. But I don't want to be that person that says, "I regret that we didn't move this project forward, and my teenager, or my younger son was injured," or somebody else's child was injured because we didn't do something for this location. Instead of doing that important improvement, we've let the dangerous conditions continue, and we've allowed the sidewalks to degrade, and the road surface to be patched, not repaired. Historic preservations like myself want to see this road restored to its historic use as a multimodal corridor, comfortable and appealing for pedestrians and bicyclists, and not fail because you got distracted by what I see as the rose petals on the icing on the cake. Please don't get distracted by the rose petals. Let your staff do their job, and let this process move forward. Don't nickel and dime this community by driving up project costs that will have to be borne by our local taxpayers, not federal dollars. We have plenty of other streets that need our attention, let's let the federal funds take care of this one, so we can invest our dollars in other places. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Gorski.
I'm Gary Gorski, ET Magnolia Street, and I really just want to echo what Juliet expressed, I thought she did an eloquent job of explaining the situation, it's a street that has a lot of safety concerns, it's a high-use area. Particularly, my concern is children, we've been working on this project for several years, trying to promote a more active way for our children to get to school, and this is an important part of that. Not spending our tax dollars on that also is important, I understand the concerns about the historical preservation, but I feel like Mass DOT has been willing to work with us to take those into consideration, and to make sure this project is safe and meets the community standards in terms of historic preservation. So I would strongly recommend that you support the proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Connie Preston.
Not exactly happy with the extra camera time here. So, Constance Preston, 18 Atwood Street. Over the last year, I've been to every city council meeting and forum on this topic, I am speaking specifically on retail sales of marijuana. I've also taken the time to educate myself and the regulations to be certain that I have an informed opinion. It's been a long haul, and you've heard my opinion on this time and time again, so I'll be brief. I love the grassroots democracy that's been happening over the last few weeks, and I really want to get on board with it, but I cannot. I've listened hard in hopes of finding some logic against retail marijuana sales in Newburyport. I've heard comments at city council meetings, read the comments on Facebook, painful at times, and have polled my friends and neighbors for their opinions. I've heard many valid reasons against legalization of recreational marijuana, but unfortunately, that ship has sailed. What I have not heard are irrational, non-emotional reasons for banning retail sales here. The one opinion I can get on board with is that retail shops are not consistent with our quaint seaside community. However, I feel that's been satisfied by the zoning restrictions that keep it out of the heart of the downtown. Story Up and Route One are certainly not quaint or seaside. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, the will of the people of Newburyport pertaining to the legalization of marijuana has been made abundantly clear by a significant margin, and there continues to be no reason for a special referendum on whether to have retail locations here. Recent survey data further support that there is no appetite for a special referendum. A special referendum is certain to vote down retail sales, and tying it together with a special ballot on tax relief for seniors further cements that. The cost of a special ballot is not insignificant, and I do not want one penny of my taxpayer dollars to go for a ballot that is almost certain to result in an outcome that's in direct contrast to the will of the majority in Newburyport. The potential for revenue is significant, and the city would be foolish to lose that revenue to neighboring towns. No one wants kids to have access to pot, but I do want our city and schools to have access to the revenue from the pot sales. Thank you.
Thank you. John Heine. And if you're paying attention, I kind of give people a T when you're getting near the end of your time, so, all right? I don't wish to be rude, but go for it.
Hi, I'm a physician in town, I'm an allergist, I live in Market Square, I treat patients with asthma every day, I counsel them on the dangers of smoking cigarettes and marijuana, so by no means am I encouraging people to smoke marijuana. But I went and I looked at the data on legalization of marijuana in the states, and I was curious of what the effects were. So I found two pretty large summaries, one from the Drug Policy Alliance, and one from the Cato Institute. So I'm just going to quickly summarize our findings and leave the studies here for you guys to look at. The Drug Policy Alliance, these are the major findings. In the states that legalize marijuana, marijuana use is stable, usage trends have not changed since legalization. They've found lower rates of opioid harm, lower rates of overdoses from opioids. Calls to poison control centers and ER visits are uncommon for marijuana overdoses. There's been no impact on road safety, DUI arrests are down in Washington and Colorado since legalization. And tax revenues have exceeded estimates, that's the Drug Policy Alliance. The Cato Institute, which is a conservative think tank, found similar findings, no change in usage trends in youth marijuana use, no change in suicide rates, no change in monthly crime rates, no change in fatal accidents, no change in high school suspensions, no change in standardized test scores in high school, no change in home values according to Case-Shiller Index, and again, the tax revenue collected by marijuana sales exceeded projections. So I just wanted to present the data that I found, and thought it might be useful to everybody to know about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I believe it's Aaron Clausen. Did I get that?
You got it right, it's Aaron Clausen, 3 Otis Place. I just want to echo some of the points made by earlier speakers relative to the retail marijuana establishment. In work that I do in another community, I run across the similar studies around legalization of recreational marijuana. There has been inconclusive outcomes of those studies, in many cases found that there's been really little to no impact. The other piece to that, the kind of public health component, public safety, that I think is important to realize, is that there already is recreational marijuana happening in this community, and by legalizing it, it gives this community a better ability to regulate it through its local zoning regulations, and then through the state CCC regulations that have very strong and strong oversight as to how recreational facilities, whether it's a retail establishment or manufacturing facility are established, the licensing process is rigorous. So I would suggest that, you know, moving forward with what has been the will of the people, I think it's a great point, that this has already been voted on by residents of Beverly, pardon me, Newburyport in 2016, moving forward with that, as has been voted on, and making sure that we institute regulations that mitigate any real or perceived impacts of this new use. And I think, again, as been pointed out, that the revenue that could be generated, this can help with information and education for young individuals, and also for, you know, public safety through public health, or public safety through police and fire departments. So we just support that the city council continue with what's moving forward with the zoning that has been put into place, and I see that I'm getting a T, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Dykes.
Hi, I'm here to talk about everything I've been reading in the paper about possibly putting marijuana back on the ballot. I come from Seattle, Washington, a state that legalized marijuana years ago. When I go home to visit, there's pot stores everywhere. I was horrified at first, I voted no to legalize it in Massachusetts. I accept the fact that it's legal now, because we have not seen in Seattle the fears that have been expressed here, whether they're valid fears that I'm hearing about putting it back on the ballot, that simply hasn't happened. The rate, and my godchildren have grown up with pot being legal, their friends smoking pot or them smoking pot, is much less than it was when I was growing up, and it was illegal and taboo. I'm against using taxpayer dollars to put it back on the ballot, it's been voted on, it's settled now. I think that if people didn't understand what they were voted on, well, it's all part of our civic duty to understand before we check mark-a-box. We can't go back again. I think there's a little bit of fear mongering going on, I understand why, because I felt the same way, but I think we can look at other communities in Colorado and Seattle, and see if these things simply haven't happened. It'd be irresponsible of us to put it back in the ballot and spend that kind of taxpayer's money, and to lose the tax revenue that we need for cities and towns, you know, for potholes, for education, whatever we can use it for, it's too much revenue to throw away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, I believe it's Blawas, but I, is that correct?
Blawas.
Blawas, thank you, Peter.
Hi, Peter Blawas, 5 Otis Place. The reason I voted for marijuana regulation was precisely for the good of all children in our state. The fact that children living in poverty, particularly children of color, are five times more likely to be arrested and receive much harsher punishment than the suburban white counterparts for exactly the same offense. There is no reason that this grossly immoral disparity should stand in the Commonwealth or in this country. I see the objections voiced at the city council meeting as a NIMBY issue and not all that difficult to resolve. I'm less concerned where the first dispensary shop sets up than I am the Newburyport start helping with to undo the corrosive effects that our country's war on drugs has brought down on a generation of unjustly incarcerated young people whose lives have been irreparably damaged. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marion Levy. Marion Levy, there you are.
Marion Layton Levy, Merrimack Street, and I will echo strongly what everybody has said thus far, Peter, but also the data and the statistics, and very succinctly, I am in support of leaving things, I think that the people have spoken, and am not in favor of a ballot question. And I think that this is a matter of, it's already been settled, and we should go forward with what has been decided already. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amr Ibrahim. Good evening, everybody. Amr Ibrahim, live at 85 Prospect Street, and tonight I'm speaking as a physician in town, and also as a parent of two young girls. So clearly, the sentiment that we've heard in the past in this room is concern for the children. There is no arguing that the effect of marijuana on the developing brain of children, adolescents, and even young adults can be deleterious. Unfortunately, the current facts in our area are such that in eighth grade, if you look at NIH data, 13 percent of eighth graders have tried marijuana, 10th graders, 30 percent, and 12th graders, almost 45 percent. If you look at actual Newburyport data from Newburyport Youth Services, 30 percent of school-aged children have tried marijuana. It will soon be legally available in Salisbury and Amesbury to those 21 and over, only 3.4 miles away from City Hall here. Again, our goal here, I think everybody can agree, is to protect our youth. It is a clear and well-intentioned goal. However, I think the stalwart goal of banning shops in Newburyport misses this objective. Currently, youth are getting marijuana from black market, back alley suppliers who do not check IDs, and who sell to people of any age at any time. My own daughter, actually, in seventh grade knows of students in the middle school that use marijuana. Illegal, regulated, and taxed supply, if done correctly, can help put an end to the illegal drug suppliers and dealers. This would make it far more difficult for our at-risk youth to obtain this substance if we restrict the sale to 21-plus, maybe 25-plus, or even 30-plus, since we can enact such rules in the community here at the local level. While this will not by any means eliminate underage use of marijuana completely, it will certainly make cannabis harder for underage youth to obtain. We need clear and open channels of communication with our youth. We need to give them information and skills to make good decisions in the future. We need to set an example for our children using logic and by looking at the big picture, not simply by going whether it is socially acceptable or not. Giving them these life skills will benefit them both now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Sue.
Hi, my name is Jessica Lasky-Sue, I live at 59 Washington Street, and I wanted to speak today about being in favor of putting the marijuana retail store on the ballot. As a professor in psychiatric epidemiology, I have 20 years of experience in opioid and drug dependence research, and one of the things I would really urge us all to consider is, well, I cannot deny the benefit of a tax revenue, I think that we really need to consider a few things. One is, I think we need to consider the public health burden that this may cost on the city. And this is something that really, at this point, we don't know how to actually measure academically, because really, there's too little data out there. But if you look at PubMed, which is the most widely available resource to date, that is being used in drug dependence research, there are a few things that we do see, and one is that, one of the primary determinants of, one of the main determinants of current hospital debt is this association with marijuana use. And another thing that we see is, while we think about marijuana use, and we think about the tax revenue, we do incur from it, one thing we need to also acknowledge is that there are comorbid disorders with marijuana use, and most notably, alcohol abuse and dependence, which we already know is an issue. So just encouraging and having a larger retail base also will increase alcohol dependence issues, which puts a large public health burden on our hospitals. When you have a hospital like Anna Jakes that already is struggling to maintain itself as an entity in our community, and it's a very important entity in our community, I really urge us to consider the public health ramifications that, as I have said, have not yet to date been determined, because retail marijuana is so new.
Thanks. Thank you.
Lauren Merle. Lauren, ah, thank you.
Good evening, and thank you, councilors, for this opportunity to speak. I am here this evening in opposition to opening retail marijuana establishments in our city. I am the parent of a fifth grader at the Mullen School. There are two specific comments I would like to make. Have you been to Eagle Street? It's amazing. There are no less than 24 young citizens on Eagle Street and the immediate neighboring streets who are under 12, and boy, do their faces bring joy on a daily basis. Faces I have grown to adore, they are faces of our future, they have big dreams, the NBA, the NFL, doctors, attorneys, teachers, veterinarians, and the military, to name a few. I'm not well-versed enough on the statistics to comment at length, but per a 2014 study, National Survey on Drug Use and Health states that one in 12 adolescents aged 12 to 17 will suffer from an addiction. That means two of the faces above will be impacted, and adolescents who use marijuana before age 15 are four times more likely to suffer from an addiction as an adult. Why, with this statistic already present, do we want our city to increase potential access and availability of recreational marijuana? Our adolescents already face enough challenges, let's not add one more risk factor for them, they already have enough. Second, professionally, I oversee long-term care operations for a national healthcare organization. Along with a brilliant team of clinical leaders, we support the care of over 1,500 patients a day. I bet you're thinking we take care of people like your grandmother following a stroke, or your parent following a hip replacement. And while it's true, we are also caring for individuals who have developed a medical illness or have experienced a life-changing trauma because of an addiction. As a healthcare provider, we now care for the rehabilitative, medical, and addiction recovery needs of many individuals. As providers, we are fortunate to be able to, fortunate to be part of the recovery process. But our country is in crisis, addiction is an epidemic. I am not a nurse, I am not a physician, I'm a businessperson, and as a businessperson, I have learned that quality drives successful outcomes. I would ask all of you to just ask yourselves, again, what quality outcome will selling retail marijuana bring to our precious community and our precious children? Please allow the people of Newburyport the opportunity to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason King.
Hi, good evening, Jason King, Ward Three, Heather, thanks for representing us well over there on Ward Three. I'm going to, for my two minutes, I've got two exhibits I'd like to share with the group. The first one is this right here. Anybody recognize this, what this might be?
It looks like a lollipop.
It's actually a cake pop, and it's delicious, it's sweet. This one has eyelashes, a nose, mouth, lipstick, it's actually called animal crackers, isn't that cute? Animal crackers. The difference with animal crackers is she's laced with 400 milligrams of THC. This gets into the hands of a 12-year-old over at the Knox School, who's maybe 5'1", 100 pounds, she's got about 30 minutes, she'll be lucky to get to Anna Jakes. Exhibit B. And I've forgotten which ones are which, and this bag. These appear to be gummies, gummy bears. One of them is a gummy bear. Sadly, the other two are not. They look like them, they feel like them, same weight. One of these is called Purple Shamrock, the other one's called Captain Munch. Eat half of one of these, and that same person is back at Anna Jakes if she's lucky. The point is, Big Cannabis doesn't give a crap about anybody in this room. Big Cannabis wants two things from us, they want a little bit of turf- They want a little bit of turf, and they want our ten-to-eighteen-year-olds. This right here, folks, is belittling to a twenty-two-year-old that just got graduated from college. This is for a twelve- or fourteen-year-old, or heaven forbid, my eight-year-old daughter. That's what's going on. Prepare yourself. They don't want me buying a dime bag. Listen, we all got, we all got away with it, all of us in this room. All of us got away with it. They don't need us. They have a three-year, a five-year, and a ten-year business plan, just like any new entity. And guess what? That lands squarely with our children in this town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Lynn Skow. I live at seventy-five High Street in Ward Two. I am a lawyer with a master's degree in public policy, both degrees from Duke University. And I also attended Johns Hopkins University with a degree in political science. I'm here to speak in favor of Newburyport residents being given the right to opt out by ballot vote. I think that some people have misconstrued the 2016 ballot question, which clearly, while legalizing marijuana, gave the cities and towns of our state the right to opt out of selling it in our towns. As a yes-town, we have a little bit of a higher burden, which involves giving the citizens the right to vote on the question. There are many ways to get on the ballot, one of which is collecting petition signatures. I'm pleased to report we are nearly to our goal. We are very excited. We've had a lot of good publicity, including by Councilor Vogel's op-ed today in the paper. People have reached out to us looking to sign our petition, and we're nearly there. But I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the Ward Five Councilor, who is going to be introducing a measure to allow the city councilors to vote this onto the ballot. You have a lot of citizens in this town, voting residents of the town, who are looking to you to put them, to give them the right to vote on this question. And so I want to thank you, Larry, and I would urge all of you to vote to allow us to have the right to vote, to opt out.
Richard Mann. Richard Mann.
I think that might be Richard Bordeman's name. That's it.
I thought that was a middle name. Okay, Richard Bordeman.
I'm just gonna wing it here. Richard Bordeman, I live eight Avon Avenue. And I want to say that I've had, many years ago, an awful lot of experience with marijuana. I was gonna echo what you said, but I think you said it so well, I'm just gonna take things in a totally different direction. The one issue I haven't heard talked about is the fact that Newburyport has a very special location. We're very close to states, two states, New Hampshire, obviously, and Maine, that are right off of ninety-five, because we're right on ninety-five. I think Massachusetts is currently the only state east of Mississippi that's making marijuana legal. Marijuana is a cash crop. I'm sure it's gonna be very popular for people. It doesn't take much imagination to think that people are gonna be driving down from New Hampshire and possibly Maine to get access to marijuana. And in the research that I have done, I don't believe you need to present any sort of ID to buy anywhere in Massachusetts. You can be from anywhere. If you work in another, you work here, you can buy it here. You're not allowed to take it back over state lines, but I'm sure that's not gonna stop a lot of people, let's face it. I'm very concerned about, once this genie gets out of the bottle, the sites on Story Avenue or down on the traffic circle could be very much overwhelmed. I don't want these people driving through our city necessarily, driving through our crosswalks, cutting through our neighborhoods. I think we should go really slow and put this up to a ballot question and give everybody the right, and I beg you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jennifer Aller from High Street. I need to address something from last month's meeting, some things that were said that were shocking and that councilors are allowing to continue under what they call democracy. At last month's meeting, a small group demanded, insulted, threatened with their future votes, a revote on pot shops in our community. The reasons they gave were fear, and they were uninformed. Some of the terms they used were, "They smell." "They don't belong here." "Send it over the river." "Our kids will be tempted." "They will use our services." "They will endanger our kids." This very small group of people who lost the vote want a majority diverse group to pay and vote again for a different outcome. That is not democracy. Democracy happened back in 2016 when a large group representing our community said yes. As someone who voted no, I cannot stand by and watch what happens when a majority vote is not respected. To me, that is far worse than two pot shops. This reminds me, not too long ago, when my grandparents stood in front of a town meeting and had to prove they were worthy of living in that section of town zoned uninhabitable. Like them, some of the words that were said at last month's meeting, I'm sure were uttered behind their backs. Not only is it wrong, but I believe we are stronger than that. We can educate, not insulate. We can trust our kids are smart and can make good decisions. We can show them we stand behind new commerce. We can show them why a diverse commerce is important to weather these waves in our economy, and why it's important to create jobs and housing for a diverse community. A pot shop owner should be treated no differently from a brewery owner. Both are trying to make a living. Nothing separates us except a decision. Thank you.
Jessica, it looks like amorosian. Jessica? That's not Jessica.
I used to be Jessica. How are you doing? I'm speaking for Jessica. So I'm Tom McGee, two sixty Water Street. I have inhaled, but that's a different story. I'm actually speaking on behalf of the group that would like to see this put back on a ballot to be cited. And the reason I was asked to is, so I'm from Oregon, where I actually think they invented marijuana. I'm not quite sure, but I spend about a month every summer out there. And I've seen a lot of the different things that have happened over the last few years since it's been legalized. And it's not that, and I did vote yes for the legalization of marijuana, for a number of reasons, and mostly medicinal reasons, where I look at it and a gentleman talked about opiates and where it's going. And I do agree, I do believe with CBD and some of the other oils and what we're seeing from cannabis, that there's absolutely a place for this type of product in our society. And I think we will see that. On my side, now, I have three teenage kids, and we cocktail like everybody else does, and our kids see us drink, and they know that you have to be twenty-one to drink. But like a lot of households, I'm sure kids sneak beer out of our refrigerators at eighteen, and we try to monitor it, and maybe it doesn't always work. Likewise, if you go by the tannery on any given Friday or Saturday, you see kids shoulder-tap and have somebody buy them a six-pack of Budweiser as well. Well, the Oregon experience that I've seen is that you see a lot of this same thing happening. Just because you're twenty-one doesn't mean that you can't get access to this product by standing outside of a shop. So as we talk about a shop owner having responsibility, it is a little bit different. There's a shop down in Georgetown, I believe, or Groveland, wherever the place is right out of town here. I have a brother-in-law with a head injury. He has a medical card. He's told me numerous times, people will stand out in the parking lot and give him twenty bucks to go buy them pot. So that's something where we have to also tell ourselves, just because it's twenty-one and over, doesn't mean our, yes, sir. Did I go over?
Wrap it up.
All right. Last thing, last thing I will say, in Oregon, they have seen an absolute increase in street sales for one reason. It's not taxed. So the people that are growing it are selling it a lot cheaper than the retail shops. So the gentleman that said that you aren't gonna see an increase in that, or your kids aren't gonna buy it on the street anymore, incorrect. They're still gonna buy it on the street, because it's gonna be cheaper. As a matter of fact, some of you in the room that smoke weed, you're probably going to still go to your buddy up in Vermont and buy his weed, because it's gonna be a lot cheaper than what the taxed is. So I'm for putting it back on the ballot.
Jennifer Rocko Ryan, former state rep candidate. I'm here tonight to oppose putting this back on the ballot because, not for any of the reasons anyone's here, because I think we can all debate the good and the bad of marijuana. I think we can all sit here and find the information that we both want to find on marijuana. I'm here tonight because this is about democracy. This has been on the ballot already three times, once for decriminalization, once for medical dispensaries, and once for retail sales of marijuana. And all three of those have passed in our communities here, by a good margin, by twelve-hundred votes in 2016. I can think of a few other races I'd like to change with twelve-hundred votes. But you just can't go back and do that, right? So this has been, this has been on the ballot three times. We can't go back. Councilor Khan did an informal ballot, did an informal survey, and it was very much in line with the 2016 vote that happened here in Massachusetts, in Newburyport specifically. I think we need to put our focuses on education. We need to educate our children. As adults, we have liquor stores. You showed the lollipops. You know, you can go into a liquor store. There's buzz balls that are little balls that you can get right at the counter. There's Spider-Man on Mike's Hard Lemonade. I mean, you can find these same examples in liquor stores that you are going to find in pot stores that are enticing to children. Liquor stores do the same thing that marijuana stores do. I think it's really important to stop for a minute and think, this is about democracy. You cannot go back and put something on the ballot that aren't, you can, you can waste your money, and you can waste your time, but you're gonna get the same outcome. We have done this three times here. I just felt it was important to come here tonight and voice my opinion on, I'm scared for our democracy nationally, okay? I think that this is the last thing we have. We have our democracy. This is what it's about. It's about voting, and it's about taking the results of what you get, and then dealing with the outcome of that. We can, we can spend money to educate our children. We can come up with programs, just like we did with liquor and driving, and drinking and driving. The same thing with marijuana. States can come up with programs to help our children, to put money forth so that our children aren't using marijuana. We don't want children to use alcohol the same way we don't want our children to use marijuana. It's exactly the same thing. I'm hearing fear mongering and scare tactics tonight, and that scares me, because this is what we're hearing all at a national level, everywhere you turn. And we don't need any more fear mongering. This is a democracy we live in. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. I apologize for butchering your name.
Riccardi.
Riccardi.
Good evening, everyone. Please vote yes to putting the opt-out question on the ballot. It is the right and appropriate thing to do. It supports our democracy. Why should other towns get to opt out, get an opt-out vote and not ours? This should not be so complicated. If a majority votes to opt out, then it's a win for our children. We will be leading by example, dignity, and integrity. If a majority votes for the shops, well, then we will feel good about living in a town that upholds our great American values. I have full confidence that if our councilors make their decision based on the integrity of facts, love for our community, and the future for our children, they will vote yes for a ballot. As a practicing pediatrician in this community for over twelve years, I feel it necessary to reiterate the following. Marijuana is harmful to the developing brain from lowering IQ to psychosis to more drug addiction to death. Again, these are facts. This is not fear mongering. I didn't make this up. I wish it was good stuff for you that made you feel good and case closed, but these are facts. This isn't fear mongering. It is a fact. I didn't study it. The experts did. Please, I think it is naive that our cannabis industry is not going to target our kids. Of course they are. You don't need an MBA from Harvard to know that if you want more money, you target the most vulnerable audience. And vulnerable they are. Never in the history of mankind have we seen so many children and adolescents suffer from depression, anxiety, low self-esteem, and disconnection. These problems directly correlate to increased drug use. Why else do you think heroin is such an epidemic now? Also, increasing access for adults will increase access for children. We already see this with alcohol. Finally, it's not too late. Voices are rising. The people of this town do want to vote, and I ask that you vote to put this question on the ballot. And just quickly, a dose of reality, there's so many statistics, like someone said, it's true, we can all read what we want to read to make our point. There's plenty of facts that people oppose me that they can find, and vice versa. But as a pediatrician in this town who sees our beautiful children every day, over a hundred of them a week, they are using this stuff. They are vulnerable. And this is not fear mongering. This is a fact. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And now it's time for the mayor's comment. Everyone who'd signed up to speak has already spoken. Thank you for keeping, most of you, your comments within two minutes. Mayor Holliday?
All right, council. It will be very quick. I know that it's already been almost an hour of public comment. Wanted to just mention that we had the ribbon-cutting on the Whittier Ridge Garrison Chardes Path, and thank you for some of the councilors who were there, and encourage everybody to get out there and walk it, ride it. It's just beautiful. Complete Streets, again, this is, I think, an adjunct to Safe Roots to School. We have entered into a contract with TEC Tech, who is also the engineering firm working with us on Safe Roots to Schools. And we will have our first kickoff meeting with them on the twenty-seventh of November. And again, the goal at this point is to identify a series ten to fifteen highest priority areas of our city that really need a Complete Streets program, streets designed more for pedestrians, et cetera, and bikes, as opposed to just for cars, and looking at places like Merrimack Street, High Street, and sections of that as part of the Complete Streets. I think you've heard Juliette do a nice job talking about Safe Roots to Schools. You know that this is a project that I fully endorse and support. We started this several years ago. They only pick a couple of communities a year to do these projects. We've come really far in this and have also absolutely taken into consideration some of the concerns about our historic High Street. But we now have thousands of kids going to school in our communities. We've had a lot of issues and concerns on safe access, and we need to move forward on Safe Roots to Schools. I appreciate the fact that Councilor Shawn asked for additional funding so that we can do one more additional rendering that could help you as you complete your obligation to vote on approval of the Safe Roots to Schools. I also gave you on the next page a list of all the streets and sidewalks that DPS has worked on. You can read those and repost the blog. I can go through all of those. Also, in the governor's supplemental budget, he did allocate additional, a little over a hundred and three thousand dollars towards Chapter Ninety funds, which is good. Again, as you know, last year we were close to a little over nine hundred thousand that we've been able to cobble together to work on the streets and sidewalks. Still have a long way to go, but we have been aggressively working to move forward on roads and sidewalk issues. So that money will go into the spring construction budget for additional work. Just some other related projects we've been working on, Phillips Drive, we've done some. There's been a subdrain that's been placed on that area of the hill that was so treacherous in the winter and seems to be working well at this point. We're in the process of doing a complete survey of the entire neighborhood to address some of those concerns. The drainage project at Colt Drive is complete. At Francis Drive, we added thirty-six aravites at the request of the At Francis Drive, we added 36 Aravites at the request of the ward for a little bit of a buffer between I-95 and the, with Stuart Miss Windstorm, which is great. Hale Street, we replaced that ugly green fence that needed to go a long time ago, except for one section, and we're working with the resident on finalizing the project. But you'll see it's been replaced with a much nicer black chain link fence. We had our Merrimack River Beach Alliance meeting Friday, and we're still pushing forward, trying to get complete ownership of that from Island Point. Parking lot, half of it's owned by DCR. That would be able us to set up a trust fund to help with further due nourishment. Concrete blocks, we're meeting with the conservation committee just to sort of update them on what's happening with that project going forward. And there also is significant amount of sand that has accreted in the Cherros area by the docks, and our emergency cert with DDP is still valid. There was a conference call today. We're trying to figure out if we can work with the state to get them to move some sand over the reservation terrace. More on that will come. We are moving forward on the rental property with NED at 51R Water Street for the parks. We also have requested mitigation of the developer who's working on Colby Farm Lane and asked for additional mitigation. They are working with the city on putting in a large storage facility that will become a storage for our parks vehicles, which means we can remove things from Agus and Common and other areas where there happens to be parks equipment in the city. We'll keep you posted on that as we move forward. We've been working for several months. We had tried previously a study with the Collins Center and weren't real happy with it. And then we're approached by a very skilled researcher and analyst in the area of health and has, we're just about finalized a analysis of the city moving forward with providing E and F services. That report will be finalized shortly and will be presented to the council. We also anticipate this week to have the, our queue for the design of the fire station 113 ready. And I also just wanted to mention a little bit about waste because there was an article in the Town Common from Newbury last week. As you know, we've been talking about the significant increases in waste and that we have got to work together as a community to do everything we can to reduce the amount of waste. The ad hoc committee has been working very, very hard on this issue, and we're looking at, after you get beyond a certain level of trash, then you would have to start paying for additional bags. A lot of different options that the ad hoc group has been working on, but we certainly will present those findings to you, and we will be entering into some, I think, some very good discussions about how we move forward in terms of reducing our city's waste. Also, today I was in Boston at MMA. I'm a member of the board of directors and the leadership team, and we were able to, after the course of several months of policy groups and our strategic plan, put together a legislative packet as we go forward. I would be happy to send you those documents. They relate to all the things that we're concerned about. Infrastructure, Chapter 90 funding, charter school funding, Chapter 70 funding, all the things that we have been talking about, local aid, and I would be happy to send you those policy statements and the package that we have put together and presented at the State House today. Waterfront West, I would like to commend all of you on the council, members of the planning board who have stepped forward to be part of this short-term ad hoc group. After several long spans of time with NED coming in with presenting to our public and getting pretty negative feedback, this was a good option when we met with NED to talk about, well, we need to step back and why don't you give us more direction. So being able to go back to some guiding documents in our zoning and master plan and create some more concrete direction for NED in terms of Waterfront West makes a lot of sense. I would like to also just say congratulations and thank you to Governor Baker and Lieutenant Karen Polito, our new senator-elect Diana DiZaglio, and to reelection of our state rep, Rep Calcourse. I would also like to acknowledge that Jennifer is here today, Rocko-Runyon, and for her excellent work is sticking her neck out there. It's not, as all of you know, who have run for elected office, it's not easy, and anyone who throws their hat in the ring deserves an awful lot of credit. So congratulations, Jennifer, and hopefully that won't be the last week. We'll see what you do. And finally, I would like to, oh, not finally, I would also like to thank Kevin Hunt and those of you, councilors, who participated in our Veterans Day ceremony yesterday. It was his 23rd Veterans event, and again, it's a very wonderful and important event for our city to honor our veterans. Just a couple of quick points. Tomorrow, we have our semi-annual legislative meeting at Northern Essex Community College where our legislators come together with managers and discuss more regional issues, and also make sure that's on your calendars for the 27th charter-directed joint meeting of the City Council and School Committee, 6 o'clock. We will have dinner in the cafeteria at Res, and the meeting will start promptly at 7, where we will go over our financial forecast before we begin working on our FY20 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the councilors while the mayor's here? I might add just one item to her report on the solid waste working group. We're going to have a report on December 10th, that are meeting on December 10th, on the outcome of the deliberations of the solid waste working group. And at that point, we hope to roll out the, the changes to the program that are, that are being suggested. And it's going to require some council approval. Thank you, Mayor. Now, we can conclude the poll hearing that we postponed until we get into the consent agenda or into the regular agenda. Let's go through consent agenda first, then we'll take it up during the regular agenda.
We did it.
We did it already.
Did we?
We did it.
They already moved it up.
They already moved it up.
It moved it all the way up to the consent.
Let's see, are we?
Voted for.
All right, act on it now.
We did it.
It's done.
Have we done one?
Yeah, you voted for. We're just moving into the consent, if I might?
Very well.
Okay.
Consent.
The consent agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes for October 29th. There are four communications. Communication 93 is Ladies Night Out Run Walk to be held December 1st, 2018. That's to go to our Public Safety Committee. Communication 94 is Frigid Fiber, January 27th, again, Public Safety Committee. Communication 96, Retirement Vote Expense Budget for calendar year 2019, received and filed. Communication 97, Marl Foundation Funding Directive to Budget Finance. There are the following appointments. Appointment 67, Karen Popkin, 49 Boardman Street to the CPA as the Parks Representative, 1031, 2021. Appointment 68, Pat Cannon, 185 High Street Cultural Commission, and Adrian Silversmith for Willow Ave Cultural Commission, both, sorry, Cannon until 1030, 2021, and Silversmith until 1030, 2019. The following reappointments. Anya G. Elrod, 43 Purchase Street to Emma Andrews until 1030, 2019. Elizabeth Valeriani, 29 Oak Street, Emma Andrews until 1030, 2019. And Elizabeth Watson, 53 Warren Street, Unit 315, Emma Andrews until 1030, 2019. And that's the consent agenda, Mr. President.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, let's move to the regular agenda. I apologize to the members in that poll hearing. Sometimes I should read my own notes.
It's okay.
First, we have to dispose of the mayor's update.
Motion received and filed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is received and filed. Communications.
Thank you. I'll give the transfer.
Oh, we still have to do the transfer.
Late file transfer.
The emergency preamble.
No, because of Heather.
Transfer 32.
Transfer 32?
So, when you just, when you came in, it is a transfer in the amount of $2,600 for Safe Roots to School. Its ongoing project requires a markup fourth width to move the design process forward. Therefore, the City Council affirmatively declares an emergency exists, excuse me, and such that it may be voted upon at its first introduction. Counselor Heather L. Shan.
Motion to approve.
Second. I'm sorry, there's move to approve, approve and seconded. Discussion.
Sure.
Counselor Shan.
So, this is $2,600 to give us a rendering for the Safe Roots to School public meeting we're going to be having the first week in December. The emergency exists because we needed to get this done and on the books, given the fact that December is coming up in just a few weeks. So, the $2,600 is to do a 3D rendering similar to what was done for the Marches Hill for the rail trail. So, we would have a 3D for the public meeting in December, making it a little bit easier for folks to appreciate what we're going to see at Johnson Street at the bump out for Safe Roots to School. So, I ask that you all support this.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Very well.
May I read it?
Next transfer.
Transfer is the transfer itself. That was the emergency preamble. Transfer 32 from free cash, $2,600, same amount to Safe Roots to School Design, same amount.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion approved and seconded. Who's the second? I missed that. Counselor Vogel. Discussion. Counselor Z.
Yeah, thanks. I, I'm supporting this, and I think having a rendering is very logical. I just want to respond to one thing in public comment. You know, I'm a staunch defender of the council. I think people know that about me. We, we do work hard and we do things, turn things around quickly. And all I want people to know is this is the first thing that's come into the council about Safe Roots to School. So, I've received some emails saying that, I guess I oppose this, but I haven't even seen it yet. So, if you can give me a chance to look at it, I would be grateful because, you know, I do like to read the details, and it's important to me, and I'm certainly in favor of the concept, but the details are important. So, I don't, I guess I get frustrated when people say the council's like slowing us down. We haven't, this is it. We were just getting it, and it's going to go to planning and development. This will get approved tonight for the renderings, which is very logical, but the rest will go to committee. And if I know planning and development, and I do, they will handle it promptly as we do with everything else, and we'll be back in maybe a couple of weeks, maybe a little longer to deal with it.
Thank you. Counselor Agaman.
Yes, I was going to hold my comments on that public testimony by Ms. Walker until we got to the, the order. But, yeah, I just want to say, I really resent her comments, and I think they're out of order. Again, this is the first time that anything's been introduced to us here at the council on this. And, you know, I've met with her personally as well, working on this, and I, I really don't think it's fair in any way to make it seem as if we're delaying. If you're going to make a change to a public street, you have to go through the City Council. In fact, the mayor, when she was a city councillor, was one of the co-sponsors of the master plan in 2008 that was passed. So, really, we're just doing our jobs, and I really don't understand where that attack came from, and I resent it.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, councilors. Where are we?
We're at...
Order 75?
Communication 92.
For the emergency preamble, yes.
May I?
Yep, please.
So, again, we're at another emergency preamble. It is 92. And the Bernard Club Santa Parade is time-sensitive due to the fact that the date of the event being prior to the next council meeting on November 26th. Therefore, the City Council declares an emergency, and such that it may be voted upon at its first introduction. Submitted Counselor Barry and Connell.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and seconded to approve the emergency preamble. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So, the event app follows Communication 92. It's the new report, Santa Parade. It's fairly comprehensive, has the registered sign-offs. There is also a map, and there's also appropriate additional insured City of Newbury Port insurance.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Come on, it's Santa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Communication 95.
Communication 95, again, has an emergency preamble. It is with respect to the interfaith candle lighting by the Ahavis Akim. It's time-sensitive due to the fact that the date is prior to the next council meeting, and therefore, emergency's declared, and a vote can occur on its first introduction. It was submitted, sponsored by Counselor Agaman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Emergency preamble having been passed, let's move on to the communication itself. Communication 95 is the letter from Rabbi Resnick asking for the setup of the menorah during the week of November 26th, and they'll leave it in place until Sunday, December 16th, as he did last, as they did last year. Thank you very much for your consideration. He states, one wishes.
Motion to approve.
Second. By Counselor Z. Counselor Tantar moved. Counselor Z seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Second reading of appointments. First appointment, 61 Victoria Finnegan, 63 Washington Street, Groveland to the Assistant Treasurer/Collector position until 11/1, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in, oh, this is the second reading. Does this require a roll call?
Does.
Okay. Roll call on this matter.
Roll call on the appointment of the Assistant Treasurer, Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien is absent. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar. Counselor Vogel. Yes. Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor President.
Yes. Was the outcome in doubt?
Not at all.
Reappointments.
Appointment 62, Karen B. Weiner, 7 Lincoln Street Affordable Housing Trust until 11/30, 2019. Next, Jane Niebling, 45 Temple Street Cultural Commission, September 30th, 2021. Sarah M. White, 349 High Street Historical Commission until 10/1, 2021. Douglas Bolick, 8 Court Street to the Board of Registarians until 9/1, 2021. And David Deluski, 334 Merrimack Street to the Tree Commission, 11/1, 2021.
Motion to approve collectively.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
To approve these collectively. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Counselor Earls.
Reappointments.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor President.
Yes. Very good. Okay. Appointments and reappointments having been acted upon. We'll move to orders. We have Order 74.
Order 74 is the so-called High Street Safe Roots to School Project, as described in the preliminary assessment. And there's a Safe Roots to School as further described in a memorandum to the City Council. That High Street project in its conceptual form is deemed consistent with the overall goals and objectives outlined in the High Street Master Plan of 2004, adopted by a vote of the City Council in 2008. Jointly submitted, Counselors Shan and Tantar.
Motion to move to planning and development.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a planning and development. Order 75.
Order 75 is...
Restrictive parking on Johnson Street.
It's Section 13168, parking restricted on Johnson Street. Reads as follows. No parking on the westerly side from a point of 342 feet north of Low Street to a point 369 feet north of Low Street. Actually, I'll cut to the chase. It's both sides of the existing crosswalk near the tennis courts as you take a right going down Johnson Street into Low Street. Submitted Counselor Shan.
Motion refer to public safety.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Shan.
So, this came out of a TSAC meeting when the folks from Johnson Street came with their numerous concerns about the traffic on their street, and this one in particular was to restrict parking because people were parking in the crosswalk, and kids were having to dot in between cars to get across the street. So, this adds to a little bit of safety on Johnson Street, so.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Order 76 is a ballot question. Reads as follows. That the following question be placed on a special election ballot to be held as soon as practicable on a date set by the city clerk. Quote, "Consistent with General Law's 94G, Section 3A, Sub 2 Marijuana Establishments as defined in GL 94G, Section 1J, the onsite consumption use of marijuana at any business location and the conducting of any such activity for commercial purposes by whichever name used shall be prohibited within the City of Newburyport. This prohibition shall not apply to the sale, distribution, manufacture, or cultivation of marijuana for medical purposes if licensed in accordance with applicable law. Jointly submitted, Counselors Junta and O'Brien."
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Second. Moved and seconded. I was just going to suggest that customarily ballot questions and matters of this nature go to general government. It's your motion.
Our existing ballot question is sitting in planning and development.
I'm aware of that.
I'm following that lead.
Fair enough. Discussion. Counsel Junta.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this ballot question language mirrors exactly what's on the petition. So, there's a petition, as we all know, that's going around the city right now gathering signatures. And I commend all the folks that are here that are actively involved with this. The comment grassroots democracy, that is true. That is what you represent. And thank you for what you're doing. You are democracy. You see something that's happening in your town, you don't agree with it, and so you're out doing it the old-fashioned way, one signature at a time. And we know how much work that is. So, I really commend you for the work that you're doing here, for your town and what you believe in. So, I'm happily putting this in, you know, into committee for study to come out for a possible ballot question for you. The other comment that was made is this ship has sailed. This ship most certainly has not sailed. You've all read the documentation on it. As a city, we have an opportunity to vote. That's regardless of zoning. So, some zoning's been set. Regardless of that, you still have the opportunity to go to the ballot. If you go to the ballot and you opt out as a city, then the zoning doesn't matter anymore. If it loses at the ballot box and that zoning isn't placed, you are doing everything right. So, I don't want anybody to say to you that you're belittling anybody or it's scare tactics or anything like that. You have the right to your opinion. I think you've expressed them well at the last two meetings. And you're doing the legwork out there to get the signatures. And obviously, other residents agree with you because I know that you've gotten hundreds and hundreds of signatures in such a short amount of time. So, good work to you all. I hope to get this into committee and we'll discuss it further there.
Further discussion. Counsel Vogel.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to that this go to the committee of the whole as well.
I will honor that.
It's a friendly amendment?
Yep.
Need a second.
Second.
Moved by Vogel, seconded by Devlin. And we'll have to vote on the amendment. Further discussion. Okay, discussion on the amendment, please. Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now, on the referral of this matter to planning and development.
And the committee of the whole.
And committee of the whole now. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It's at planning and development.
It is.
Next item, we're moving into ordinances. We have ordinance 26.
26 is the change to licensing dogs and kennels, submitted by Counselor Tantar. The owner or keeper of a dog after June 1st shall be fined, reducing the $25 to $10 in addition to the license fee. And then after July 1st, instead of a fine of $50, reducing it to $20 per dog. And then the owner and keeper of an unlicensed dog after August 1st shall be fined instead of $100, $30.
Motion to refer to budget and finance. Moved and seconded by Counsel Z. I believe you got the second and first. Discussion. Counsel Agarwal.
Yeah, I don't think it's appropriate to send the budget and finance. Remember, we amended the municipal code, so the animal control officer is under public safety. I don't really think this is a big moneymaker. I don't, so I really think it's better off going to public safety.
Counsel Tantar.
I believe the argument on this from the clerk's office is that what the clerk's office has experienced is that individuals who do not license their dogs on time come in and see the large penalty. And then rather than licensing their dogs, they walk out. All right? So, it's really not direct, it's not something that the public health department can comment on. It's more of, I would say, behavioral economic response. All right? So, you have to find that sweet spot that gives people an incentive to license their dogs on time, but does not give them an incentive to walk out the door without licensing their dogs. So, I, you know, I'm sure, what, public safety? The public, who?
I wholeheartedly agree with the counsel of Ward 4.
That was my reasoning behind it.
This is a job for an economist.
Further discussion. Counsel Agarwal.
I guess I would like to, you know, the purpose of the fines, as the counselor said, is to, for people to license their dogs. So, it would be kind of nice to know from the animal control officer whether they care. So, that's why I thought I would go there, but whatever.
Is that, are we making a motion, Counselor?
No, I'm not.
All right. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just say no, come on. It is referred to budget and finance. Order 27.
27 is the amendment to the zoning map, amended pursuant to Business 1B District and to the Residential 2 District. And then there's a map dated November 7, 2018, attached here too, showing the changes. It's jointly submitted, Counselors Junta and O'Brien.
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Second. Second by Counsel Z. Discussion. Counsel Junta.
So, as we set the marijuana zoning last, last meeting, we neglected the families that lived in such zone. So, we now are looking at a map that changes Woodman Way and Newport condos from business to residential for respect for the people that live there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of referring this matter to planning and development, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's referred. Committee items, budget and finance.
Motion to remove, I think it's order 67, fiscal year 2019 residential factor.
Moved and was there a second? I believe there's. Counsel Z. Discussion.
We have to, point of order, we should vote to remove it?
That's what we're going to do.
Oh, you want discussion, okay.
Had discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of taking this matter out of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
So, the committee.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. And seconded by Counsel Z. Discussion. Counsel Tantar.
Yeah, yeah. I'm trying to move things along. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three to nothing to keep the residential factor at one. For informational purposes, residential and open, there are basically five categories of property that constitute the city's tax. There's residential, there's open space, there's commercial, there's industrial, and there's personal property. The currently residential and open space makes up about 87 and a half percent of our revenue from property taxes and the 12 and a half percent from CIP. There's a rule of thumb that you do not change the residential factor away from one unless your CIP, commercial, industrial, and private property get over 20%. What we've seen in the city is that there is extremely strong demand for residential property. And so, that's been increasing in value. And there is not the same demand for commercial and industrial property. So, in committee, we thought that it would be unwise to have a differential factor. So, we support a residential factor of one.
Further discussion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just as a point of clarification. So, your motion to approve the order was with residential factor of one.
Of one. And I might point out that the finance director and the assessor are here to answer technical questions if you have them. Counselors, further discussion. Hearing none. We'll take a roll call vote on this matter.
For order number 67, Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Agarwal. Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin.
Yes.
Counsel President.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to the next one.
Motion to remove order number 68, fiscal year 2019 tax rate.
Second. Moved and seconded of removing this from committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion?
Yes, motion to approve with, as amended in committee, of setting a tax rate of $13.08.
Second. Seconded by Counsel Z. Discussion. Counsel Tantar.
I think the proper place to begin on this is to consider the budget process that we did last May into June. At that time, we first calculated the levy that the city has, which is we calculated by adding two and a half percent, or actually, the state does it for us, by, it's required, by adding two and a half percent to the previous levy. Then we added to that our estimate of $700,000 in new growth. Just quickly, what new growth is, is additional value in the city that comes about from construction or building being turned into condos. And that was a, during the budget process, we make a relatively conservative estimate as to what it will be. Then, to arrive the actual amount that will be taxed, we add in the bond, the bond exclusions that are passed by the public. And we arrive at a number. Now, when we have that number for revenue, we add it to state aid, we add, we add, you know, local, other local revenues such as the meals tax and excise tax. And we have a total amount of revenue that we work with. Then at that point, we can, we look at the expenditure side, just roughly, all right? Now, what happened is when fiscal year 18 budget was certified, it turned out that there was an increase in new growth of approximately $985,000 instead of the $700,000, all right, that we had built the budget on. If we were to increase by the full two and a half percent of the levy, at the end of the fiscal year, we would find ourselves with an additional approximately $285,000, $300,000 in unspent revenue. Approximately a year from now, that would be an increase in free cash, all right, in, for the next fiscal year. The administration suggested instead that instead of increasing by the full two and a half percent, that we increase the rate by 1.84%. The increase by 1.84% will keep the total revenue that we budgeted for the same, all right, because of the increase in new growth. And so, therefore, we'll be able to balance the budget. It, that will result in, well, the $3.08 will result in a seven cent per thousand decline in what it otherwise would have been, in an 18 cent decline from what the rate is now.
Got it.
All right, follow me. So, in committee, we voted, we voted, I want, okay, I will not, if anyone, if anyone has further questions, I will answer them. But, I mean, basically what happens is property values increased. What we, what we were given is prop, mean property values, that is average property values, which increased from 500 and approximately $560,000 to $595,000. That is, you know, $36,000 increase. That's, that's an average amount, all right? In committee, we asked for the median amount. The median amount was an increase in the previous year from 506,000 to approximately 537,000, all right? What's the median? A median indicates that there are as many households below the median as there are above it, all right? And so, I think it's a, it gives you a better sense of where the increase in property values were. They were on the high end of the market, all right? And so, the high end of the market will bear more of the burden of the increase. I think I'll leave it at that. It's scintillating material as it is.
Further discussion. Counsel Z.
Yeah, so I was one of the three who voted in favor. I think, I think this makes sense maybe to try and say the same thing you said, and maybe dumb it down a little bit for my own benefit as well as perhaps others, is, you know, the levy goes up every year two and a half percent. And there's a couple of ways we can kind of fill that gap. Obviously, the easiest one is you just simply tax to the full levy and you make up that two and a half percent increase on the levy. The other ways, really, there are two other ways. One is to backfill, to reduce the increase in taxes and backfill with free cash from last year. So, leftover money, we put it to this year. And instead of having to tax up here, we tax down here and we make up that gap with free cash. And then the last one is what we have here where we had the good fortune, I guess, of having, you know, an estimate come in higher than expected. And so, we don't use any of last year's free cash, which is what we've actually done. I believe, my memory is the last several years, we've done that technique and used that. A couple of thoughts. One is, you know, we're trying to do the best we can, I think, but a lot of this is the end of a process, not the beginning. The tax rate's at the end. So, there's a lot of decisions that happened up and leading up to it that really in some ways kind of helped make the decision for you in a sense. So, that's one thing. Two is, I think one thing that's always confusing is that even though we have two and a half, the average or the median go up more than that. And that's because when that new growth, the double-edged sword of the new growth is that when that valuation gets dispersed across all the assessments, you know, the average tax bill is slated to go up 4.5%, 4%. The median is a little bit less than that because the median value is lower. My point is, is, you know, you will not be having, your tax bill will not be two and a half percent more. It will be more than two and a half percent. And we understand that. My last comment is my concern really, and been one for me for a while. And that is, this year, we have this, but I think it highlights the, we are very dependent on my opinion on new growth. And new growth never lasts forever because the economy always is cyclical. So, and we really rely on new growth and other things to generate free cash, which we then use to spend on capital and all the things people want us to do in terms of fixing their roads and sidewalks and schools and all that. So, that's my concern. I think it's logical to do this because we were fortunate having an increase in what we estimated. But my big concern, something we touched upon briefly and will actually talk about most meetings, is, you know, what does a city look like when the economy is not doing quite as well and the new growth, which is one of our big drivers, free cash dries up. So, I'll be supporting this tonight and biting my nails for the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. Counsel Tantar.
Just one other point. The actual budget process begins, well, actually, it begins when we get our free, the free cash certified, all right, from previous. But, on November 27th, by charter, all right, the school committee and the city council will meet. And that's when the finance director will provide us with our current situation going into the next fiscal year, all right? So, in many respects, as the counsel from Ward 1 just said, setting the tax rate ends up being residual, all right? We did the budget in the spring and we have to balance the budget. So, we have to find some way to balance the budget. We don't really have a, however, in this next process. We don't really have a, however, in this next process, you know, we're just beginning it, and we do not have to assume that we will increase taxes by two and a half percent, all right? That depends on what we project our needs to be over the next year, and what we project our income to be over the next year. So, I would strongly advise, at the senior center, November twenty-seventh, is Tuesday evening, that's where you can really get involved with the budget, and then continue with us until next June. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Hearing none.
We have a recommendation from committee, asks for a roll call vote on setting the tax rate.
Setting tax rate at thirteen point oh eight. Counselor Earle.
Yes.
Counselor Augerman.
Yes.
Counselor Jenta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor President.
Yes.
And he has one absent, tax rate is set.
Very well.
Motion to remove transfer thirty, Harbor Master retained earnings, forty-one thousand two hundred ten dollars and seventy-one cents to pump out boat purchase.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none? And all those in favor taking this out of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, it's out.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Counselor Tanta.
Yes, this also was a three-zero vote in favor of approval coming out of committee. The Harbor Master has also received a grant of fifty-six thousand two hundred fifty dollars from the United States Fish and Wildlife Services Clean Vessel Act Grant Program. So, the request for a transfer of forty-one thousand two hundred ten dollars and seventy-one cents is the difference between the grant amount and the total cost of buying a new pump out boat, which is ninety-seven thousand four hundred sixty dollars and seventy-one cents. The transfer is from Harbor Master retained earnings. I believe last year, I don't know if we need this detail, but we pumped out twenty-one, twenty-three thousand four hundred and seventeen gallons of something.
Good to know.
The current, yeah, thank you, the current boat is ten years old, and the new boat is expected to last at least ten years, probably more, is the anticipation. Just one last thing, other than the general waterway fee that boat owners pay, they are not charged an additional fee for pump out, that's covered. So, again, three-zero vote, I urge you to vote yes on this. The old boat will be around and give some back out because it's still functioning.
Well, we were hoping someone might purchase it.
It's not what we were told.
We didn't discuss that in committee. I don't know where you heard that.
Yeah, no, yeah, aside business, yeah. I don't think so. Further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, it is done.
Motion to remove order seventy, CPC fiscal year 2019 rail trail phase two.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, it's out. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion? Counselor Tanta.
Yes, this also came out of committee with a three-zero vote to recommend approval. The request from the community preservation committee was for a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. It's necessary because the contingency that existed from rail trail phase two was expended in the interim detour, and also planning for mediation along that twelve hundred feet of waterfront where PCBs were found, all right? The scope of the project would be, A, to complete the interim detour, B, to address the temporary erosion, and mediated, also reporting is necessary, DEP and the EPA, to hire a coastal engineer to examine the possibility of raising the rail trail along the river there, after the PCBs are addressed, to everyone's satisfaction. The idea here is this, we have an opportunity, those of us who, you know, went to the resiliency meetings noted, and actually, even if you didn't go, you might note that the water treatment plant is right there on the river, the rail trail will go behind it, and the coastal engineer is going to examine the potential for raising the rail trail, and to build a little bit of buffer to provide some protection to the water treatment, maybe buy us another ten, twenty years, depending upon the rate of sea level rising. The, finally, there would, the scope would be managed bidding on the permanent shoreline trail. So, what's interesting about this is, I believe, that the planning department is not yet sure which direction we're going to end up going in, whether or not it will just be a media, shot, mediation of the direct PCB problem and finish off the trail, or whether this larger enhanced thing, we're going to raise a trail. That, some, a good part of this money will be spent, hopefully, to come to a conclusion in the next five to six months, as to which direction we can afford to go in. The environmental bond bill includes seven hundred fifty thousand dollars that we could put toward this. I think we're looking at an estimate for the total project, very rough amount of almost a million dollars, nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. We, I think we have a hundred thousand dollar grant, we want it for brownfields, so we have some money, we can tap the environmental bond bill, one hopes, and again, this hundred seventy-five thousand dollars would help us accomplish all of that. Committee was three-zero in favor.
Thank you. Counselor Z.
Yeah, I think the Ward Four counts are covered a lot of the stuff, but it's my ward, so I want to take a moment just to rewind briefly, because I've had a lot of emails, but people don't know how we got here, so I just want to clarify that. So, the trail was started, everybody knows that, progressing on various parts of the trail, up from Arches Hill, down through the South End, and then, what happened is, as part of any project like this, borings are required at specified intervals, there was some contamination discovered, PCBs, this is not abnormal for this area in general, especially having known that there was, of course, a railroad on what is now becoming the rail trail. And so, a plan was sort of set in motion to try and figure out how to deal with that remediation, and that's one problem. And then, unfortunately, while that problem was being worked on, a new problem presented itself, which is that during some of the rough storms we had, some of the, some bites got taken out of the shore by shoreline erosion. So, there are two problems, and I think that's something that's, a lot of residents have been calling me about, don't know that there are two issues. So, now, we have a problem because, first of all, we are, once you find out about contamination, you must remedy it, you can't just leave it, unless you want to do very expensive reporting to the EPA on a regular basis, not to mention that that's really not the right thing to do. The shoreline erosion, we may not be as compelled necessarily to fix, except that we must fix that in order to fix the remediation problem, because the equipment can't move on the shoreline if we don't fix the blowout, so to say. And then, a third thing has emerged, and that's that the wastewater treatment plant is in that area, and resiliency, of course, is important. So, we actually have three sort of different things that are all interrelated, but are separate in their own way, so the contamination, the shoreline erosion, and the wastewater treatment plant. So, that's why it's closed now, and, you know, this is where we are. So, that's, that's how we got to where we are here. The first thing I wanted to add is that when we considered this, we did ask if the money that is, well, there is no money left anyways, but that, we're all set with the rest of the trail, and the answer was yes. Best estimates right now is that, and probably you know this intuitively, if you've walked it, it's pretty much done, there's a few things that need to be buttoned up, but we don't expect to receive any, we don't expect to, not to say it's impossible, we don't expect to receive any other transfer requests, the punch list the contractor's working on. That was my question, I didn't want to start something new and not, you know, it'd be nice to finish a part of the trail, and that is anticipated, so that's important. Okay, on to the money, you know, the challenge here, I think, is that I don't think it's justifiable to spend a million dollars to build this piece of the rail trail, but as it relates, and as there's a nexus to the wastewater treatment plant that needs protection from this, from the river, it's logical, as the project manager stated, you know, most of Water Street has protection, there's a seawall, then there's this break where there's nothing, and then there's the, basically, the bulkhead that protects the rest, so this is kind of an odd duck in that it's in the middle of two other protected areas. I support this, my hesitancy in what I'm going to say is what I said in committee, which is that we're not sure how we're going to do this, so there's basically two tacks, one is, we get the seven hundred fifty, we pump in some more money of our own, presumably, or maybe there are other grants that remain to be seen, and we do the big project, which is essentially some sort of revetment wall, or some sort of hard structure protection, which enables us to protect the plant, and as a byproduct, allows us to raise the trail and then build the trail, and we call it done. That's a seven-figure project, at least by today's estimations. The fallback position I understand is that if that doesn't work out, let's say if the money can't get released from the bond bill, or we're not willing to put in the extra money, or whatever other scenarios may happen, that we fall back on solely doing a remediation so that we can check that box, be done with the EPA, because as I said, if you don't remediate, they will be with you at a cost, because you have to continuously do reporting. So, what I'm, what I push for, and what I'm interested in, is I would like to also know sooner rather than later what the cost is just to do the remediation, but I'm satisfied that this money is needed, and that we're going to do the best we can, hopefully, to answer both questions, and on a timeline, I think, is what I heard too, about maybe so next spring, basically, or early, late spring, we would have some answers, and then we would hear from Planning Development what, sort of where they want to go, and where the money is going to come from, and so forth. So, that's why the trail isn't open, residents shouldn't expect that part to open up anytime soon, I regret to inform you, I wish I could, but at this point, since it's contaminated and we're getting into the winter season, it won't be open for the foreseeable future until all these things get resolved. Hope that helps answer some questions that folks may have about what's going on there.
One moment before, I might just comment, if I may, from the chair, with the permission of the council, one correction to something that Counselor Z said, and I think it was just an error of omission. PCB contamination is not the result, generally speaking, of railroad activity. If you brought a forensic ecologist in there, they would say, no, it's most likely the result of activity related to electricity transmission, and so, I'll let you draw your own conclusions from that. Counselor Jenta.
Just to add a little bit more flavor from the state side, but as mentioned in the economic bond bill that was done this spring, Representative Kelkhorst was able to get seven hundred fifty thousand dollars put into that, and then, in, in looking at the rising seas in the water, the water treatment plant, he was able to get the language of no less than one million dollars to protect the sewage treatment plant from rising seas. His comments in the paper where he was very confident that that money would be released next year, so, you know, I feel confident we're going to be able to move forward in some way on the rail trail. It's certainly beautiful, we took a walking, walking tour of it, and it is really nice, and then it just comes to this abrupt end, and we were able to tour the area that's contaminated, and I feel good that on the state side, we have all the language in the bond bills to get us where we're going, and hopefully, it will be released. Thank you.
Hearing none, I'd like to take a roll call on this matter.
Roll call on order seventy, motion to approve. Counselor Earle.
Yes.
Counselor Augerman.
Yes.
Counselor Jenta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor President.
Yes. Anything else, Counselor?
That's it.
Education.
Yes, sir. So, couple of small things here, we were supposed to meet with the folks from friends of New Report Track, due to an illness, we had to push it to our next meeting, so we'll be meeting with them then. We did take the time to talk to the superintendent about the upcoming joint meeting and the budget in general, just to get his feelings on things. It was really a conversation from thirty-five thousand feet in the air. Counselor Tanta gave us a riveting rendition on how the tax rate is set, and the difference between going to the full levy and not, it was really interesting stuff, but not much to really report here, you really kind of had to be there. We talked about a lot of different things about the budget, but no real details. We were there, we were filling time, and we look forward to talking to our friends at New Report Track next, next month.
Very well.
Do you have something else?
Counselor Tanta?
Just very quickly, I wanted to add that we, we did urge the superintendent to pass school capital projects past the school committee, and, but the finance committee member said that we would appreciate the school committee's input on capital projects for the school firm.
Counselor Jenta.
And then, one more, one more item, it's been mentioned twice, but I'll mention it three times because it is important. On November twenty-seventh, at seven PM, we're meeting to talk about the budget with the school committee, it's a very important meeting.
Six for dinner.
Six for dinner, not for everybody at home, seven for everybody at home. But please come, if you're, if you're at home and you're watching, want to learn about the budget, it's a.
It's at the Brezner Hand, I made a mistake.
What's that?
I believe it's at the Brezner Hand, not the senior center.
It's at the Brezner Hand.
Oh, it's at the Brezner Hand.
Library.
Okay, so it's at the Brezner Hand, November twenty-seventh, seven PM, everybody come. Thank you.
Thank you.
General Government, nothing to report?
Nothing to report. Neighborhood City Services, nothing tonight.
Planning and Development.
Yes, we do. Motion to remove ordinance twenty-five, Colby Farm Lane Residential Overlay District.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded, I believe I heard Counselor Tanta in the second. Discussion, Counselor Augerman.
So, we had a committee meeting at six o'clock this evening, the planning director was there, the putative developer, his attorney, attorney Mahoney, I think his name was, and Nick Cracknell, who's a consultant on this one. Many of you will be familiar with it already, the site, I would direct your attention in the packet to this lovely color plan, this is the best way to understand what's going on, with various shades of green. So, this is the property that for many years has been in the Bashaw and Colby family, it used to be a horse ring, there's already been some development at the southeasterly corner with two houses, as you know. A few years ago, we, the city council authorized purchasing about a hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet in an L shape, and most of that really was driven by the same thing this is, which is view shed. Low Street used to all, pretty much all be farms until after the war, and increasingly, it's getting gobbled up. So, the issue is, all right, if a developer comes in, what would they do? They could develop, looking on your color sheet, lots seven, six, and up and down Colby Farm Lane, formerly Crow Lane. Very simply, it's a three-part deal that's been forged, and it's been led by Ward Councilors Jenta and Tanta, because it mainly affects their wards. The deal is to amend the zoning to allow cluster development as shown on Colby Farm Lane, and preserve the rest of the land open, again, not necessarily ever using it, but just keeping it open for visual relief. The amendment is necessary, as I understand it, because under the underlying zoning, they couldn't get enough lots to make this pencil. Another issue we already voted on is we authorized a CPA grant of two hundred thousand dollars to compensate the Colby Bashaw family for these lots, six and seven, so that we can take ownership of those. The final leg of the stool, if you will, is a purchase and sale agreement, which has been reviewed, I understand, by our attorney, Copeland and Page, and that includes certain conditions for the buyer and seller to go forward, namely, that the city gets this land on the outskirts. Also, there's going to be, the city is going to pour, be obligated to pour a foundation or a pad, more accurately, for a shed further down Colby Farm Lane, and the developer will be obligated to go vertical and build the shed, I believe it's five thousand square feet, give or take, and that could be used almost immediately by Parks and Rec to store their equipment and get. by Parks and Rec to store their equipment and get them out of Atkinson Common. So that needs to be taken into account. The questions that the committee had for the developer and his team were, well, what could you, you know, how many units could you get if we didn't do this rezoning for you so we could evaluate whether it was a good deal? As we understand it, you could probably get 14 lots out of this land. Now, they're going to be doing two affordable units as well, because under our ordinance now, we have an inclusionary requirement. So basically, they get a bonus. All said and done, they're going to end up with 16 units, as shown on these 14 lots. So a couple of them will be two-family. As far as the street, you know, we had some discussion over whether the streets would be up to the standard of width, that the city would want to accept them. Essentially, that's not part of the deal. So it's not before you tonight. They're going to have to go through the planning board for a site plan review, and that's where they're going to have to hash out things like street widths. And it will be incumbent on the Ward Councilors to be involved and make sure things are done as understood tonight. One last thing. You'll notice on this color plan, there's a triangle in dashed lines. You can just make it out. There's an existing farmhouse at the corner of Colby Farm Lane and Low Street, and that is, my understanding is, the people there, Lot Five, they're not part of the deal. So nothing is happening at Lot Five. We have no interest there. But they wanted to make sure that they had a view clear going back towards the fields, and that's why that dashed line is shown there, and the developer said he would honor that. Oh, also, I'm sorry, I forgot, he will be doing the sidewalks. They're, you know, they'll be part of the deal, the perimeter of his project, and he also mentioned doing across the street at Atkinson. I guess that's North Atkinson Street. So three zip, we recommended approval. I think we spent a lot of time to be careful. Oh, we did get a letter from people in my ward and on School Street who had purchased a building from the same developer, but were not happy, essentially, with some of the details of how that worked out. We did all consider that. The committee both got the letter from the people on School Street who were unhappy and a response from the developer, and we were satisfied that there was nothing really germane to this deal, and we were comfortable with it. Thank you.
Counselor Vogel?
I just had a quick question, if I may. When such overlays are proposed, or especially with the OSRDs, and there are, you know, affordable, if you will, often there's a understanding that those units will be up to par with the other units. Where does that get managed? Is that at the planning board?
Counselor Agnew.
When the council adopted the inclusionary zoning last year, we actually wrote that in. So there has to be comparable units, and they, you cannot basically create a ghetto. You cannot do that. So that's binding on the planning board.
That's managed at the planning board?
It's mandatory.
Thank you. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Jenta?
So this property is in my ward, and I really think this is an important project. I've said it before, but I'll say it again. The residents want this land to be open. They want the viewscape, and this project allows us to have about 70% of the land maintained as open space, which is great. And there had to be a deal made to get it, but I think this is a great deal. We're giving up a very small portion. We're going to offer some housing in Newburyport that'll be smaller, more affordable. That's quite attractive. It's on the road. The fields will be open for passive use. The folks that live in what is the old farmhouse, which is number five on your map, you know, they came to one of our meetings and they expressed some concerns, and the developer went right to them and made some changes to make them happy. So I was really happy with that attention. And there's also a little bit of housekeeping in here. If you look at the A, B, and C on the zoning map, if you look at B, it eliminates the existing IB rod overlay district, which is Oleo Woods. So Oleo Woods was a residential, excuse me, an industrial zone, and it's now been changed, as we read here, to become a residential zone. And it also, these properties that are north of this particular property are also in here with a change in the existing 1B located north of Colby Farm Lane and west of Low Street to an R2 district. So if you read through, we're actually cleaning up this area quite well in regards to future development and what we'd like to see happen here. So I think this is very important to my ward and for future development. So, thank you.
Any other counsel? Counselor Tontar.
Yeah, I co-sponsored this, and actually, my interest in this was to, I think that citywide there is an interest in having that open space and keeping this from getting developed. It's not just a Ward Five or Ward Four interest. It's in all of our interest to preserve that 70% open space. And also, with the change in the zoning, potentially to open up more space to the north of Colby Farm Road. So I think it's great. Urge you to vote yes.
Further discussion? Counselor Zede.
Yeah, I just want to rise in support as well. I thought the committee had a good discussion this afternoon. The only thing I want to say is I'm only voting in favor of the deal that's in front of me today, which is basically making some concessions on the zoning and the density bonus, if you will. I don't know how the development's going to turn out. That will largely be in the hands of the planning board. We did spend a lot of time talking about the road widths and so forth. I know I have a view on that, that I personally think strongly that we should be designing roads to be public streets and just accepting them at the outset, rather than playing this Mickey Mouse game where they're designed perhaps maybe too narrow, and then later, at a later council, 10 years later, they come back in and say, well, you know, why aren't you planning my street? I pay taxes. Why aren't you picking up my trash? That's my personal view. So I'm just, all I'm saying is I'm voting on this, which seems like a very reasonable trade-off, which is that you allow the cluster housing to occur, and in exchange, you receive the protection of the open space, which I agree with. The Ward Four council is important to a lot of folks just coming down there. I don't know how the development's going to turn out. I hope for the best. It looks nice. But we talked at length about whether, you know, you try and write some of these things in, but it was decided that this probably wasn't the appropriate venue. There are subdivision regulations that maybe should be looked at at some point. So I'm pleased to support it, but I just wanted to say that I'm voting on what I have in front of me, and I don't know what's, how it's actually going to turn out in the end.
Further discussion? Hearing none? We're going to take a roll call on this matter, being a zoning issue.
So first reading of Ordinance 25. Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Agnew.
Yes.
Counselor Jenta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor President.
Yes.
Ten, one. First reading passes.
Nothing else from our committee. Thank you, counsel. Public safety. Nothing to report. Utilities. Nothing else tonight? Rules.
Nothing.
Good of the order.
Motion to adjourn.
You thought you got away clean, didn't you? But almost. Thirty, Mr. Chair, 30 seconds. Two items. One, we made an offer several, I'll come back to you, Joe. We made an offer several weeks ago to provide counselors with laptop computers for the purposes of cutting down on the amount of paper we shuffle here. If you are interested, as I am, and perhaps some of you are, I know some of you have your own laptops and you use what you're comfortable with. That's fine. But if you want to use a city laptop, we're able to purchase them on your behalf. Please let me know by Friday, because we can place the order, and the technology director's going to get cracking on that and install the software we need so that we can do some editing, et cetera. The second item is, I'd like to announce an intention that Counselor Jenta and I have been discussing, and that is to offer free parking in the downtown area. We're going to have an order before you at our meeting on the 10th of December, which gives us time, to offer free parking for the shopping season immediately preceding the Christmas holiday, and that would be from the 20th to the 24th of December. That's in the offing. And if you have any other thoughts on ways we might stimulate and support shopping in our downtown area, I'm all ears. That's all I had. The assessor had her hand up. I'm going to recommend.
I see signatures of the President's Director.
Thank you. Good point. Yep. Thank you. So counselors, before you leave tonight, we'll need that sign. Other items for the good of the order? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Never had one yet. We're done.
There's no real order to it.